The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus.
Present.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderman Iggracia.
Present.
Alderman Colder.
Here.
Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderman Schweitzer.
Present.
Alderman Howard.
Present.
Present.
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Present.
Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Collins Mohammed.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Velcoro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Peel. Alderman Spencer.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Con. Alderman Boyd. Twenty-four present.
A quorum being present, we are blessed today to be led in prayer by Pastor Marcus Adams from Living Word Global Church. Pastor Adams, we are in your hands. Pastor Adams, you're muted.
Here, Mary.
There you go. Now we can hear you.
All right. Good morning, Mr. President. How you doing, sir?
We're doing well.
All right. Let us pray. Father in Jesus' name, we just thank the Lord for being present and for you being present in our midst. As these leaders for the city of St. Louis gather for business, we ask for you to be with them, to touch them, that they do business in agreement, in unity, for the best of the St. Louis community at large. We also thank you, Lord, for strength and health and for sustaining us during this pandemic season. And we thank you right now that everything is done in your precious son's name, Jesus, and that there will be peace and unity among those who govern the residents of the city of St. Louis, their families, and their communities at large. In your son's precious name, we all say amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor Adams, for leading us in prayer and getting us started off right. Let's give him a big round of applause. Thank you. You're welcome back to kick us off anytime, Pastor. We're going to suspend with our regular order of business to take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. All the ones from the nineteenth, Resolution 128, I know it's on the drive, but would you like to start by first suspending the rules to introduce Courtesy Resolution 128?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to introduce Resolution number 128.
On the courtesy.
On our Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
It's been moved by all the ones from the nineteenth, uh, and taken a second.
Second then.
Seconded by all the from the twenty-third and all the one from the fourth, that we spend our rules to introduce Courtesy Resolution 128. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Schweitzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye, aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Velcoro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Ah.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye, aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Peel. Alderman Boyd. Twenty-six, aye votes.
By vote, staying the motion, all the ones from the nineteenth and introduce Courtesy Resolution 128. Madam Clerk, please place Courtesy Resolution 128 on our Courtesy Resolutions count.
So noted.
All the ones from nineteenth, you're now recognized on the motion for the Courtesy Resolutions count.
I move that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
It's been moved by all the ones from the.
Second.
And seconded by all the ones from the twenty-second, that we adopt our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. All the ones from nineteenth, you're now recognized on the presentation of Courtesy Resolution 128.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and members of the board and the public. We have an honor here to present this resolution to Leah Daniels Butler. She is a renowned film, uh, and I say film entrepreneur, because as you look at the film industry, you understand that it's more than just the actors. It is those who cast those roles, whether it's TV or film, it's those who produce, it's those who also write for those. So I would like to ask if our clerk could please read the resolution.
Madam Clerk, do you have a copy of Resolution 128?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Resolution 128 honoring Leah Daniels Butler. Whereas the city of St. Louis, a Board of Aldermen pauses to recognize and applaud the accomplishment and contributions of Leah Daniels Butler as a casting director and producer. She has been responsible for launching the careers of talented actors such as Gabriel Sidibay, star of Academy Award-winning film Precious. Currently, Leah serves as casting director for the television's number-one show Empire. Whereas Leah Daniels Butler began making a name for herself in the early nineties, working as TV film projects with legendary casting director and mentor Jackie Brown and Kimberly Harding. Under their leadership, she assisted in casting actor recording star Tyrese Gibson in the ad that would launch his career. Leah's work ethic and reputation for getting the job done quickly spread among black filmmakers and mainstream television space alike. And whereas in nineteen ninety-four, Leah landed a coveted casting position as the assistant to Leah Split, senior VP at Warner Brothers. Within two years, Leah was working on award-winning projects, projects like Friends and Suddenly Susan. Both shows earning Emmy Awards for acting roles before leaving Warner Brothers, she also cast Wayan Brothers and For Your Love, which received six NAACP Image Award nominations. And whereas among her many accolades, Leah Daniel Butler is the recipient of the Hamilton Award for Outstanding Casting for her work on The Butler and Outstanding Achievement in Casting for a Television Drama Award for her work on Empire. The Casting Society of American, America appointed Leah Daniel Butler to its Board of Directors, where she served as the only African-American member of the board. And whereas when she's not busy shaping the many fictional characters, international audiences have come to know and love Leah. Leah dedicates her time helping shape the futures of women in her community who are in need of second chances. Leah sits on the Board of a New Way to Life Reentry Project, an organization that provides housing and support to formerly incarcerated women. And whereas Leah Butler is married to executive and producer Harry Butler Jr., and the couple both agree that their greatest accomplishment to this date is their twenty-seven years of marriage and raising five amazing children. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis, that we pause to recognize Leah Daniel Butler and to thank her for the many contributions she has made to the filming industry and to acknowledge her talent in developing characters that touched millions of people throughout the world. We further direct the clerk of the Board of Aldermen to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and prepare a memorial copy to the end that it may be presented to the honoree at this time and placed deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this twelfth day of November, twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry, uh, fifth day of November, twenty twenty-one, by the Honorable Marlene Davis, Alderman Nineteenth Ward, Honorable Louis E. Reed, President of the City of St. Louis Board of Aldermen.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We have the honor of having with us as well a well-known film producer, Mr. Greg Thomas. Could you give us a few words as well?
Greg.
Greg, are you there? Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Hi, I just wanted to first and foremost, thank you all for honoring Leah and allowing us this brief moment to talk about why filmmaking in St. Louis is so important. Myself, as a native from St. Louis, I've traveled all over the country and I've seen cities like Atlanta go from like very impoverished-looking places to like very, very just amazing when it comes to like what Tyler Perry and other filmmakers have been able to do down there. And I feel like St. Louis can follow in that same mold, that same footstep. And we need people like Leah and Henry Butler to come in town and help, like kind of be, help kind of spearhead, I mean, projects like this. So I'm just honored to be able to introduce my friends, Henry and Leah Butler, and they can take it from there.
Right. Hey, Henry?
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. President. You know, this is really an honor for my wife and myself and for Craig. And we here, man. And yesterday, we were at Sumner High School and it was, we had amazing time there, just working with the children and just seeing the energies and like the little five minutes we spent, we just spent a lot of time, we spent an hour or so, but an hour or so we did from we walked in that room and we spent a little, about fifteen, twenty minutes with them, the energy just changed and how they really got it and they changed their energy. It was amazing, like, and we will be back. We will be doing something major out here. We're going to do something with Sumner High School, real big, real, it's going to be real great. I promise you, like, they got my heart, the city got my heart. This is amazing and we just want to say thank you. We do want to talk about, you know, coming out here filming and like Craig said, it's other cities that, um, that are thriving in the film industry because of the tax breaks and because of the things that they offer. So we here, we here for it. I'm going to let Leah talk. I'm not going to keep you like.
All right. Before we go to her, you have a new role that, uh, that you're playing for a major film industry provider. What's that you're currently?
Urban Flix. I'm head of business development and interim GM at Urban Flix. We're interested in coming out here filming. We, right now, I'm going to Oklahoma. I'm going to all these cities to give all the taxes in it because we want to go there because it helps the industry. So it's like, it's like a give-give thing. You know, we bring money to the community, we bring jobs, we bring, you know, hotels and we staff locally and things like that. So with those incentives, it definitely benefits the city or the state or whoever given those incentives for us to be here. It helps the local people. It definitely goes to the people.
Excellent, excellent. And Leah, you hold one second. Alderman Davis.
Thank you very much. I wanted to do was to also add to that, our arts district here is very, very, very alive. And we wanted to make sure that you understood that we're ready to support you in your endeavors on any level that we can. I also wanted to ask that, uh, we have the honor of allowing you to take your time as we are honoring you today. Leah Daniels Butler, please have some words.
First of all, thank you so much. Thank you so, so much. This is so humbling and just, I'm so honored. I was not expecting this. This, I truly was not expecting this. This is amazing. This is beautiful. I, now I have to go back into my office so I can have a wall to place it on instead of getting a Zoom from my home office because this needs to be displayed so everybody can see how St. Louis just showed me love. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Um, this is amazing. I'm literally speechless because I don't even know what to say. Thank you.
Take your time. Go ahead. We want to hear from you and hear about what tax credits can do for our city and.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Top projects that you're working on.
Absolutely. Um, well, currently, just so you guys are known, I'm obviously casting director by trade. I am not only working on, I know that you guys mentioned some of the past projects that I worked on, but currently working on Our Kind of People, that's on Fox, The Wonder Years, All American Homecoming, I just finished Coming to America, the sequel, and also United States versus Billie Holiday. So I have a lot, and then there's some upcoming projects too. We just, our production company finished our first movie that we actually executive produced, meaning we put our own money into it called Survival, and that's coming out very soon. Urban Flix actually is one of the partners in that as well. And as Henry mentioned, it is really important that productions find other places that they can come into, like other cities, that they can come into that offer tax incentives. Because again, it does, it helps the, not only the city, but it also helps our production too. It helps create jobs. There are so many different positions that go behind the scenes in making, you know, the storytelling process come to life. So even though, you know, I don't know exactly how much production is done in St. Louis, I know what it will do is help train new people, even if they don't have like a lot of experience, just being on production, it helps train them so they can be, you know, become department heads for future productions that may come to St. Louis. And it's really, really important. It helps boost the economy in hotels, like hotel revenue. Just all around, it is really, really, it's helpful to you. It's just a two-way, you know, it's a win-win situation.
Yeah, we hire, we hire caterers locally, we hire actors locally, we hire gaffing people locally. It doesn't make sense for us to ship those people out here. We can hire locally. So all the, I mean, so all the behind-the-scenes jobs come here. We're not going to fly a caterer out here to be a caterer. We're going to hire.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Yeah, it does. It just really helps that. It's like the more money that we can save in production costs by not, you know, having people come out and fly. Obviously, we'll have to, you know, in the beginning stages, just to teach the, some of the local people here, the process of it all, so they can then become their own department heads. Obviously, you do have certain people that will need to be flown out, but at the end of the day, majority of the crew will be local, will be local people here in your community.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Leah. And there are a whole host of Aldermen with their hands up. I'm going to go to them. I'll go to them before I have some closing remarks and come back to you. No, the Aldermen from the twenty-third had his hands up first and then all the ones from the twenty-sixth and then the fourth. Alderman from the twenty-third? Leah, first off, congratulations.
Thank you.
What caught my attention and why I raised my hands? The twenty-seven years of marriage and you look like you're barely twenty-seven. I don't know about the old guy next to you, but, you know.
We've been married, we've been married since she was five.
That's right, you know. I got the same issue. We've been married forty-seven years and my kids are older than me by the day. You look good and God bless you and, you know, the wonderful work. I watch a lot of those shows you talk about. So you must be doing a good job. But anyway, what caught my attention was your years of marriage. God bless you and.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Now, this is the way to start a meeting. Thank you. Chopper out of my seat. I'm so inspired and encouraged. It's a pleasure to meet you. Of course, I read and heard about you all forever. Now to be able to see you and feel the spirit even through this Zoom call, I know it's going to be an amazing move. I was texting people, sending the link. I text President Reed because we talked about this in two thousand nineteen.
That's exactly right.
See things from interfruition. So thank you so much for your dedication, for your commitment and for you wanting to even not forget about Little Old St. Louis and give back to St. Louis. And I think that with that, it would, it would be our honor. I'm asking to move to put Resolution 28 in bank to show that we are standing behind you as Alderman Davis said.
And I wanted to say.
Hold on, hold on a second.
All right, go ahead.
It's been moved by all the ones from the twenty-sixth, seconded by all the ones from the fourth and a host of others, but I missed it, that we make Resolution 128 and bank. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Even bigger congratulations now for you all. So what that means is that every Alderman would like their name added to this resolution. So that's what that signifies a huge honor and what the Board of Aldermen really thinks about this resolution and the work that you are doing. So congratulations again on that.
Yes, yes.
And I, I just want to thank you to Craig too also. Y'all local.
Well, we got, yeah, we'll get, we'll get there.
All right, cool. I'd like to get very polite here.
Alderman from the fourth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to congratulate you guys for your years of service. And I am especially ecstatic that you went by Sumner High School. I know you inspired some individuals there to hopefully go into your, that area of, um, of production. I'm at a loss for words, but I just want to congratulate you and thanks for coming to Sumner High School in the city of St. Louis. Thank you.
We'll be back to Sumner High School soon, real soon.
Sumner High School was a real inspiration.
When you come, I'd love to go there with you.
Hundred percent.
Let's do it.
All right. Thank you.
Any, any further discussion, any further discussion? I just want to add a couple of things. First, I just have to say thank you with so much gratitude to Craig Thomas. If you guys didn't notice, that orange patch on his, on his shirt, come here, yeah. And you see that says, what, forty, let me zoom in there. What does that, what does that say, Craig?
Year-old vegans.
All right, forty-nine-year-old vegan. And loyal St. Louisian Craig does film projects all over the country. He always comes back to St. Louis. The reason Leah and these guys are here today is because Craig has been really leaning on them and said, you've got to see St. Louis. And what they, what the, what the Butlers had told me, they said, look, Craig has been evangelizing St. Louis so much, we said, we need to go, come on over to St. Louis and see what it's all about. So Craig, thank you so much for what you're doing. You're making inroads, you're making changes. We're going to look at a tax credit program here in the city of St. Louis and so that we can enjoy the movie business and all that it has to bring to St. Louis. Craig, thank you so much for all your commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to the, and to our honoree, Leah, I want to just tell you a little bit about what this resolution is. This resolution is the highest honor this board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does, it cements in time a lot of your many contributions up until this point in time. So one hundred, two hundred years from now, when people research the records of the city of St. Louis, they will read about you and read about some of your many accomplishments and read about this time today where we paused in our deliberations to assure that you were properly and duly recognized for those many accomplishments. We are just so thankful and grateful that, for all that you've done across this country to influence people and to bring people into the movie business that have become careers for them and let them turn their lives around and everybody else that surround them and comes in contact with them. And by doing that, you've integrated the, in the movie industry and began to break down racial barriers and across the entire industry, but not just that, this entire country. So as a father of four, I thank you for that. And I'm so appreciative to you as a St. Louisan. We need you to come back here. We need you and your husband to come back here and keep doing what you're doing and work with Craig. Craig, thank you. Leah, I bless you.
Thank you.
Keep doing what you're doing. Let's give her a big.
This is so humbling. Thank you, guys, so much. We are literally at a loss for words and we can't wait to create some wonderful energy and synergy here in St. Louis. I mean, and to God be all the glory.
All right. And I know you all have just a busy, busy day, so we'll let you go. Don't feel like you have to stick around.
Thank you, guys. All right.
Parting words, Mr. Butler?
I love St. Louis. I'm going back. I'm going to talk to Joe Torre. I'm going to talk to Guy Torre. I'm going to talk to Cedric. I'm going to call Nellie right now and I'm going to tell him I got the keys to y'all's city, so y'all going to get them back.
That's how you do it.
I promise you, guys, I'm going to do that. I have a promise.
All right. Thank you all. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our Courtesy Resolutions calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, your hand is up.
Yes, I would like to move to, I believe it is Resolution 127. Last week, we made resolutions and bank when several young folks became Eagle Scouts. This is an additional one that Alderman Schweitzer is bringing, so I believe it's appropriate to, to make this in bank. So I would move with.
We make Courtesy Resolution 127 and bank. As been moved by all the from twenty-fourth, seconded by all the from ninth, that we amend Courtesy Resolution 127, making it in bank. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change.
So noted.
All right. That will return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests, introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the twenty-third. As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer, who never misses a meeting, as my special guest. All right, Greg, welcome. Any further? Alderman from the twelfth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. My honor.
My honored guest today is Mr. Landry Willis, who is here in the attendees list. He is a student at St. Louis University in Environmental Studies and is helping to bridge a sort of conversation gap between groups, two groups on campus, and also has been engaging members of the board to discuss green legislation and other green initiatives. And in my opinion, if I may offer, is going to be quite the, quite the rising star in environmental-related issues, not just in St. Louis, but elsewhere. So thank you, Mr. President and board, and I return.
All right, and it was Landry Lewis, correct?
Uh, Landry Willis, I will put it in.
Landry Willis. All right, Landry, congratulations and welcome. Any further introductions, any, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're here on November fifth. It was on this day in nineteen thirty-five that monopoly was invented by the Parker Brothers. And in nineteen forty, Franklin Delano Roosevelt was elected to a third term, which had never happened before. But more importantly, this is a, a day that is a conflict for many people because it's Love Your Lawyer Day.
All the lawyers on the board, we have to love you today.
So take advantage of it. It's probably the only day you get. Thank you.
All right, all right. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Friday, October the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Move by Alderman from tenth. From twenty-second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the alderman's mailboxes.
Dispense with line item seven. When anyone might take any bills off of any of our informal calendars, when anyone might take any bills off of any of our informal calendars.
Mr. President.
Alderman from nineteenth?
I'd like to remove Board Bill number ninety-three from the informal calendar to the perfection consent.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place Board Bill ninety-three on the perfection consent count.
Oh, noted.
When anyone might take any other bills off of any of our informal calendars, any additional bills off of any of our informal accounts. Dispense with line items eight through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill one twenty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Peel and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission approving the renaming of entire length of a public street in the city of St. Louis Children's Place extending between Euclid Avenue on the west of Taylor Avenue on the east to be renamed to Nash Way to celebrate the accomplishment and cultural impact of Dr. Helen Nash on the St. Louis region. Board Bill one twenty-seven sponsored by Alderwoman Peel and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for, for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in Pacific Avenue from Pappin Street to Shoto Avenue in the city of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one twenty-eight sponsored by Alderman Gunther and Alderwoman Martin. An ordinance amending ordinance number six, seven, three, zero, zero, which ordinance relates to original lease agreement dated January the seventeenth, two thousand and seven to be extended in the second, second mutual option between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and S.I. Warehousing Company, Inc., doing business as Archway Fleeting and Harbor Service, a Missouri corporation containing a severability clause. Board Bill one twenty-nine sponsored by Alderman Cone. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment authorizing the Director of Airports and Comptroller of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport to enter into and execute on behalf of the city a memorandum of, of agreement to reimburse between the city and U.S. Customs and Border Protection containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one thirty sponsored by Alderwoman Peel. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on June ninth, twenty twenty-one to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from J Industrial District to H Area Commercial District in the city block three nine six two, so as to include the described parcel of land in city block three nine six two and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one thirty-one sponsored by Alderwoman Howard. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Safety or his designate on behalf of the city of St. Louis to enter into and execute and U, and U.S. Department of Justice, twenty twenty-one Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant to accept funds awarded containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one thirty-two sponsored by Alderman Ryan, Alderman Todd, Alderman Gunther, and Alderwoman Ingracia. A board bill repealing ordinance numbers six, six, four, one, nine, six, eight, four, zero, four, six, nine, four, two, nine pertaining to the possession of marijuana and paraphernalia and updating local enforcement priorities probable cause and reasonable suspicion standards and disciplinary standards to harmonize city policy with Article fourteen of the Missouri State Constitution. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Street Committee Board Bill one twenty-six and one twenty-seven, to Ways and Means Board Bill one twenty-eight, to Public Safety Board Bill one thirty-one, to Health and Human Services Board Bill one thirty-two, to Transportation and Commerce Board Bill one twenty-nine, and to HUDs Committee Board Bill one thirty. That is extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of HUDs with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one ten, Committee sub-sponsored by Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance approving the petition to establish the Steel Colt Square Community Improvement District containing an emergency clause and containing a severability clause. The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Services with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one hundred sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Stevens, and Alderman Todd. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment authorizing the Director of Department of Human Services on behalf of the city of St. Louis to accept the grant award from Washington University Health Communication Research Laboratory through funding from the National Institute of Health in the amount of thirty, thirty thousand dollars containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Streets Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one sixteen, Committee sub-sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus. An ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission of the city of St. Louis and authorizing and directing the city acting through the treasurer of the cities, of the city in their capacity as parking supervisor to issue and sell parking revenue bonds, series twenty twenty, an aggregate, aggregated principal amount not to exceed five point four million dollars containing a severability clause. That is, is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
We will dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill ninety-three sponsored by Alderwoman Davis. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the J Industrial District and the K Unrestricted, Unrestricted District to the H Area Commercial District in city blocks two, two, one, two, and two, two, one, three, so as to include the described parcels of land in city block two, two, one, two, and two, two, one, three, and contain an emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the tenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our current, our perfection consent calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
We have none.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill eighty-six, one, zero, eight, one, zero, nine, and ninety-seven.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the tenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second, and there was somebody else, and Alderman from the thirteenth. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our third reading consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Aye. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Aye. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Thank you. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.[1317.69]
Hi.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro.
I.
President Reed.
I.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-six eye votes.
By vote, stay in the motion. Alderman from the tenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossment.
Board Bill one zero seven sponsored by Alderman Cone. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimating and Apportement Authorizing and Directing, the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis to enter into an execute on behalf of the city, the third amendment to the banking concession agreement AL two seven eight between the city and US Bank National Association amending the banking concession agreement AL two seven eight as amended.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, we recognize on third reading and final passage, Board Bill one oh seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we uh finally pass Board Bill number one oh seven.
Uh second about Alderman from the ninth, Alderman from twenty-fifth, please proceed.
I knew my motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we third read and final pass Board Bill one oh seven. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
I.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
I.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
I.
Alderman Page.
I.
Alderwoman Gracia.
I.
Alderman Calder.
I.
Alderwoman Rice.
I.
Alderman Gunther.
I.
Alderman Ballmer.
Hi.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Stevens.
I.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
I.
Alderwoman Howard.
I.
Alderwoman Green.
I.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Abstain.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd.
I.
Alderwoman Davis.
I.
Alderwoman Spencer.
I.
Alderman Mohammed.
I.
Alderman Boyd.
I.
Alderman Vucor.
I.
Alderman Orion.
I.
Alderman Cone.
I.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Hi.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro.
I.
President Reed.
Ah.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-five eye votes and one voted abstain.
By vote, stay in the motion. Alderman from the twenty-fifth and third read and finally pass Board Bill one oh seven. Report of engrossments and final passage.
Board Bill eighty-six, one zero eight, one zero nine, ninety-seven, and one zero seven.
All other business being suspended, President shall an open session of fixer signature here to to the end that these may become law. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution twenty-two sponsored by Alderman. One twenty-two sponsored by Alderman Cone and the following all the persons. Gunther, Middlebrook, Davis, Clark Hubbard, Howard, Green. Middle, oh, I'm sorry. Peel, Schweitzer, Mohammed, Stevens, Rice, Calder, Norrion, and Jay Boyd. Authorizing SSLDC's explor- exploration of authority, uh I'm sorry, of opportunities for redeveloping surplus school buildings in the city of St. Louis.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you recognize on first reading of resolution one twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I I'd like to just take the moment to uh when I'm planning on referring the the resolution to the HUDs Committee, um if you're so amenable. Um but I would like to just mention that this resolution is uh to really direct SLDC and I've had conversations with uh the Executive Director Neil Richardson over there um to work with SLPs and other stakeholders in the community on plans for the surplus vacant schools that have been vacant for longer than ten years. There's roughly about twenty of them um throughout the city. Um obviously, many of you on the call are familiar with one in my ward, Cleveland High School, that's been um kind of a huge problem for my community for many, many years now. Um but uh you know, we've got a real opportunity, I believe, with ARPA funds and you know, infrastructure funds that are coming into the city to evaluate uh you know, um whether it's maintenance or uh stabilization or possibly acquisition of these properties to work through um also um you know, possibly marketing materials, financials, incentive packages and whatnot for uh properties to uh basically engage developers in our communities and uh and also our constituents to make sure that these properties are being put back into productive use. Um hopefully quicker uh sooner than later. So um with that, you know, I'd like to uh move that this uh is referred to committee and I look forward to continuing the discussion there.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from twenty-fifth, move that we send resolution one twenty-two to HUDs. Second about all of them from the fourteenth. Any discussion on the assignment of it to HUDs? Twenty-third, you have a question.
Thought my name was on it. I don't see it on there.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. And it's been moved and seconded that we assign resolution one twenty-two to HUDs. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign resolution one twenty-two to HUDs and um also make note that Alderman from twenty-third uh is co-sponsored.
Oh, noted. I'm sorry. Resolution one twenty-three sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, approval of the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee of the Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvement Accounts Annual Budget pursuant to ordinance six four nine nine four.
Alderman from twenty-seven, you recognize on the first reading, resolution one twenty-three. Alderman from the twenty-second, are you handling?
I I thought I was, but.
Alderman from twenty-third, you handling?
I thought I was, but maybe not. I talked to her last night. She asked me if I would handle them.
Okay.
Um I'm fine. We're just referring them to committee. Uh it's it's so we can get the money underway so we can get all these parks projects going.
All right. Alderman from the twenty-second, did you have a question related to?
Uh actually, uh Mr. President, I I it was my fault. I thought we're on second read. I was looking for the attachments that wasn't there, so I'm fine.
Okay, all right. Uh it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty twenty-third. Um actually, Alderman from twenty-third officially moved to assign this to.
I'd like to move that we uh assign Board Bill one twenty-three to the Parks Committee.
Uh resolution. It's been moved by Alderman from twenty-third, second by Alderman from the fourth and someone else, but I didn't catch it. That we assign resolution one twenty-three to Parks. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign resolution one twenty-three to Parks.
So noted. Resolution one twenty-four sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd. Approval of the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee of the Neighborhood Park Fund Annual Budget pursuant to ordinance six seven four seven seven.
Alderman from twenty-third, assuming you handling.
Twenty-four also. Yes, like to move resolution one twenty-four to the Parks Committee, same thing, so we can get the money going in our parks.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from twenty-third and second by Alderman from the twenty-second. To Parks and there's been a request for previous role. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Resolution one twenty-five sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, approval of the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee of the Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvement Accounts Annual Budget pursuant to ordinance six four nine nine four.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize on first reading, resolution one twenty-five.
Again, I'd like to refer resolution one twenty-five to the Parks.
Move move by Alderman. Any discussion? It's been a request for previous role. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign resolution one twenty-five to Parks.
So noted. Resolution one twenty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, subpoena authority of committee.
Alderwoman from the first, you recognize on the first reading, resolution one twenty-six.
Mr. President, members of the board, resolution one twenty-six adds Streets Committee to the uh uh the multitude of uh committees that we passed a few weeks ago. I didn't add Streets Committee at that time because I was hoping that um what we did would ma- send a message to some people in the uh current administration that they should not be dipping and dabbing with legislative business and pretty much I was getting um full uh cooperation with people. Unfortunately, since that time, I have uh been privy to the fact that uh persons in the mayoral administration have uh felt the need to tell some city employees not to show up and not to testify and or put a heavy hand into telling them how they should vote for things. And so um for me, that means I need to, not just because I need the subpoena power in the streets because we have a multitude of things that we're get- we're doing uh that in- involve investigation, but also to protect city employees. When you start having people come in telling them from the mayor's office, don't show up and or you can't say this, or you better change your uh vote, that's very troubling to me. Um and it also indicates to me that that person doesn't understand that the legislative branch is a separate separate equal equal to the the uh judicial and the uh mayor's office which so we have three branches of government, legislative, judicial, and I can't even think of the other one. Thank you, exactly. And um so we need to send a clear message. I didn't want to do it like this. I really wanted to wait if we needed, but if we need to protect our city employees so they feel comfortable and testify and that there won't won't be any kind of re- uh re- uh retro or some kind of uh reaction to them or something will happen to them or they'll be in trouble. If they give their honest opinions, then that's so be it. Then everybody, we need to enact, every committee needs to have subpoena power. And we need to subpoena that person who is doing that because they really need to read the charter and they need to read the civil service rules which direct employees to interact and work with us when we are doing investigations. That is part of our job and it is not for the employees to say what the administration wants. It's for the employees to give their honest opinion. And so when this is going on, I am very concerned. So I was one of the people, I supported the uh um the granting of subpoena power, but I didn't put the Streets Committee, which I easily could have and I was invited. But now I feel the need to because of the continuing inappropriate behavior coming from a member of the mayor's appointed uh staff who is exact, who is not in fact, a civil service employee, they're accepted out of it, but they think that that's what they're supposed to do. And they need better training and that is why I'm now coming before you, asking you to uh suspend the rules so that I can pass resolution uh one twenty-seven, is it? I think it is.
One twenty-six.
One twenty-six, I'm sorry.
Yep. Would uh would you like to request unanimous consent?
Okay, well, we can start with unanimous consent. Yes, sir.
Objection.
Objection.
There's been an objection to unanimous consent. Uh Alderman from the first, so you can move to suspend the rules.
That's what I'm doing.
All right.
I figured it was gonna be objection.
All right. Would you like to make that motion to spend the rules for the adoption of resolution one twenty-six today?
I'd move to uh suspend the rules to adopt resolution one twenty-six.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the first. Uh seconded by Alderman, I believe, from twenty-third and the twenty-second that we spend the rules for the purposes of that adopting resolution one twenty-six uh today. Yeah, any discussion on that suspension, uh the technicality of the suspension of rules? All right, it's been moved and seconded that we spend the rules for the purposes of adopting resolution one twenty-six today. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
I.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
I.
Alderman Bosley.
I.
Alderwoman Evans.
I.
Alderman Page.
I.
Alderwoman Gracia.
I.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice.
I.
Alderman Gunther. I'm sorry, Alderman was that? I.
I.
Thank you. Alderman Ballmer.
I.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Stevens.
I.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
I.
Alderwoman Howard.
I.
Alderwoman Green.
I.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Sure, I.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd.
I.
Alderwoman Davis.
I.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
I.
Alderman Boyd.
I.
Alderman Vucor.
I.
Alderman Orion.
I.
Alderman Cone.
I.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Hi.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro.
I.
President Reed. Alderman Calder.
I.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Spencer.
I.
Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-six eye votes.
By vote, stay in the motion. Alderman from the first and spend the rules for the purposes of passing resolution one twenty-six out today. Alderman from the first, would you like to now make a motion for the adoption of resolution one twenty-six?
President, members of the board, I move to adopt resolution one twenty-six.
Move by Alderman from the first, uh seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Alderman from the first, you recognize, please proceed.
Mr. President, I do not uh present this resolution in glee or happiness. In fact, as I said before, I didn't even add my the Streets Committee before and I was invited. Um it saddens me when people don't know the rules and you're new. I will help this administration. I if you ask me if you're on the other side of something, I will tell you where you can go look and see what the rules are. I think the rules are in place for a very uh important reason, so we can have a fair uh fairness across the board. But when I hear uh city employees saying, well, I don't know if I can come and say this or I'm frightened to say this, or I'm being threatened, or I've been told to change my vote, I have a problem with that. And that person um is gonna get a personal letter from me, which I'm gonna share with all of you, I'm not gonna say their names here and point them out where they need to look so they can stop doing this. Um the mayor's office is not a bully uh pit for them to be able to bully employees. Yes, uh we have employees that's been here for a long ti- time and in fact, I still call them, some that's been here before me. Lisa McNichols to say in our uh i- i- in the Board of Alderman was here before me and I still seek her advice on things. So uh I would say to the new people in the mayor's office, instead of uh showing that you don't know your job, why don't you pick up the phone and call people and ask them and they will be glad to help you. Um and do not ask people not to come and testify before our committees. And do not tell them to change their votes. That is not the society that we want to live in. And it's not the mayoral uh administration that I support it. And I would never ever be for that kind of thing. I don't care who they are. We did, we we've spoken to that on the we've seen that happen on the federal level. Um and I don't want it to happen on the uh local level and I've uh opposed it all along. Same thing if we go to the state level, I'm opposed to it. So I am uh asking for support of this um resolution only with hesitation and kind of sadness. Because to me, I'm gonna say to all the employees, make sure you come and testify before the Board of Alderman, give your honest and true opinions, or if you have facts, do that. There is nothing to hide because in this mayoral administration, we are open, we are transparent, we are clear, and we want, make sure that people get the facts.
Thank, all right, thank you. I was muted. Uh I thi- think Alderman from the twenty-third had his hand up first.
Actually, the twenty-second hand is here.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um wow, I just kind of had an aha moment. Uh my hand was initially up because I wasn't sure if the Alderwoman from the first was gonna ask for unanimous consent. But when she did, I heard a lot of objections. What was amazing is that it passed unanimously. It that that was just amazing to me because I know I heard about four, maybe five objections to unanimous consent. Um i- it's pretty troubling that we have an administration that talks about transparency, that focus so much on being transparent to the point where it's just a trendy phrase to say. It's a subliminal phrase to say. I think it's important that we all walk to walk and talk to talk at the end of the day. Um I have also heard from employees that are just terrified to speak up oftentimes because they fear for their jobs. We are losing good employees because they want to do the right thing and they're just not gonna stand for the nonsense. Um if you want to talk about transparency, dagnem it, let's be transparent. And for even members of this board who portray themselves as being progressive and wanna be transparent, I'm just not seeing it. I'm seeing you you just support the administration no matter what they wanna do and that's not fair and that's not just and that's not real democracy. That's trickery. Let's just do what we wanna do by any means necessary. That's unacceptable. But you got called out today and I appreciate you voting with the unanimous group for this resolution because it was the right thing to do. I wanna also be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you, Alderman from the first board.
Uh okay, uh um Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the twenty-second added uh requested to be added as a co-sponsor.
Oh, noted.
Uh all, excuse me, twenty-second. Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize.
Yeah, I obviously I want to be a co-sponsor, so.
Twenty-third also.
But um you know, for I I will actually, you know, I I agree with the Alderwoman from the first to him, the Alderman from the twenty-second. Having tried to get reasonable people to come in and speak about the jail. Uh it reminds me of again that that movie The Rainmaker where all the witnesses seem to have retired or moved on. Mister, you know, Dale Glass, you know, he was honest and open about what's going on in the jail. God bless him. Guess what? He retired. Mister Carson came and spoke. Even though there were you know, told, he was told that to, I you know, I know that. Uh or I'll say I speculate that, but I do know. And God bless him, guess what? He's retiring. So now without the subpoena power that we have, we're not gonna know what's going on in the jail because now it's a big secret. I tried to get the fire chief and the police chief to come in separately before I brought in uh Dan Isom, the Public Safety Director, to speak. And they were told they cannot speak that he would come in and speak and then maybe you know, and again, I will agree that for some group that says we're transparent. I shouldn't have to fight through all this. I finally met with the chief and the fire chief in the mayor's office. I would rather hit it as an open public meeting as we talk about how to deal with the nine-one-one system. Uh you know, again, that should have been a meeting that you know, was was shouldn't have been behind closed doors, but it was. When we went over to speak at the to to look into the jail, they sent over uh Heather Taylor which ended up arguing and watching over whatever anybody said that make sure that Mister Carson, I assume, didn't say the right thing. Telling Alderman from the twenty-second ward uh being confrontational, causing him to leave the meeting. You know, for some group that says we want to be transparent, it shouldn't be. We shouldn't have had, never had to go to these lengths. You know, I was the first one, and I I know I was the sponsor of that, to get the subpoena power and I appreciate the help from the Alderwoman from the first ward and helping me to get that through and I know we had to make a couple changes to make it in in the right format. But it's just, it's a shame that we have to go through this to at least have that threat out there to have people come in and talk. And I guess now, by the look of it, uh they'll just happily retire. I'll call somebody in and about two weeks later, I guess we'll be seeing the announcement of the retirement. And very, very upset about it. Very upset to see Mister. And very, very upset about it, very upset to see Mr. Carson leave. After all the accomplishments and programs that he put in over at the, um, MSI, you know, what they want to call the workhouse. The transparency of not letting the, the untransparency of not letting the media go in. You know, this has been nothing but let's hide, 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 and it's unfair, and it's sad. It saddens me not to say that now I got, we have to go through this kind of nonsense to subpoena people in to get simple answers done, when we, as the Alderpeople, are the ones that are having to answer the questions from people, when they call me and say, Joe, you're the, uh, head of the Public Safety Committee, what's the answer to this? And I'm like, I don't know, because we can't get those answers. The answers on the nine-one-one system, the fire chief should have been able to come in and speak, not be held up, not be told by the Public Safety Director that anyone can't come in and speak in front of my committee unless he's invited first. So, anyway, I just wanted to vent, vest, vent, whatever, all this. But put me as a co-sponsor, and I want to thank the Alderwoman from the first for helping me do the original one, and I will state again, it's sad that we have to go through this. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Alderman from the twenty-third. Um, I think we had the Alderwoman from the second, then the eighth, fifteenth, and so on and so forth, I think that was. Alderman from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would just like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Madam Clark, please make note of that, uh, add Alderman from the second as co-sponsor, and please add me as a co-sponsor also. Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Um, I, I appreciate our legislative process and the ability to object. Um, my, my objection this morning was due to form, um, not to substance of our, of the powers that I believe that we have and I believe we should enforce. Um, I, I voted no on our, on the previous bill or the previous resolution to grant blanket subpoena power like this. I do think that they need to be more specific, and so my objection to unanimous consent was in order to stay true to my interpretation of the Charter and our rules. Um, and so that is why I then voted yes, um, to suspend the rules, because I think that this is the proper function, the process to go through to do this. So I, I appreciate the opportunity to speak as to that. If there are questions that are not being answered, absolutely, um, this body has a right to get those answers. Um, I, I will just mention that I think it is unfortunate that our body has devolved to the point where we are making assumptions about each other's motives and our purposes here, and I would just ask my colleagues to give each other the due respect that we all have our perspectives and our reasons for doing things and projecting, um, perceived processes onto each other in a public forum like this really does us all a disservice. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, Alderman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Um, I was, I raised my hand to say much of the same thing as the Alderwoman from the eighth. Um, you know, also, you know, hearing this conversation about transparency, I do believe that transparency is very important. Um, I hope that this body holds ourselves to the same standards that we are asking, um, other branches to be held for. I think a, a major step in doing that would be for the Legislation Committee, um, for this next iteration of the map, um, to draw that in committee, that is live streamed, that is broadcast, so people can see the process that has been going through and can see the methodology that has been used, um, to develop these lines. You know, we heard from a lot of testimony the other night, um, and I, I heard from folks afterwards who felt very intimidated and berated to come in front of this body.
Point of order.
Uh, Alderman, please state your point of order.
Mr. President, the Alderman from the fifteenth word is talking about a topic that's not germane to this resolution or that. Subpoena power.
With all due respect, the Alderman from the twenty-third went on and on about something that was not related to this topic.
No, 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 uh, no, with all due respect, the Alderman of the twenty-third was talking about subpoena power and getting information from the administration. What you were discussing was the public coming to talk to the Board of Aldermen, two different subjects. So his was germane and yours wasn't. Now, uh, so I'm calling, I'm, I'm, I'm ruling in, in, in favor of that uh, objection, but I'm also allowing you to continue, uh, and keep your subject matter germane to the subject ahead.
So what I will say is that, un, with subpoena power, we have the ability to bring people forth in front of uh, our committees, regardless of whether they are a member of the public that we are seeking information from, or a city employee that we are seeking information from. I sincerely hope that we do not use intimidation tactics against people that we are asking to come in front of us. I sincerely hope we do not ask people to get in unsafe situations, like getting out of their car on a dark street in order to testify in front of us. Um, we can, uh, bring people in front of us in mech, in ways, um, you know, using this power that ensures that, that people's safety, um, and integrity is upheld, uh, and that the subpoena power is not used for political reasons. So, uh, that is all I have to say today. Thank you.
Alderman from the tenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Please add me as a co-sponsor, sir, thank you.
Madam Clark, please make note of that, add Alderman from the tenth as a co-sponsor. Alderman from the fourth.
Please add me as well, as a co-sponsor.
Madam Clark, please make note that, add Alderman from the fourth as co-sponsor. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, uh, in, in regards to this, uh, uh, the, the Alderwoman from the first, and I certainly disagree on some things we have, uh, since the, the first day I met her. But, uh, one of the things that I really respect about, uh, the Alderwoman from the first is that she, she doesn't play games. And she hasn't, uh, since the, the, the first conversation I've had with her, uh, I've gained a lot of respect for her over the last few years. Uh, I try really hard to be a, a straight shooter when we're addressing, uh, these issues, and for that reason, and simply because this, uh, resolution simply reiterates a power that this board already has. Uh, I am supportive of this. Uh, it's important that this body can get to the bottom of the facts in any given situation. That's one of the reasons why when we were caucusing, uh, I proposed, and, and this body supported swearing in witnesses in committee to make sure that we could get the truth, uh, from, uh, any given, uh, testimony. Uh, it's important to me that we hear from any individuals or any departments that we see fit as a board. Uh, and that we're getting the, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth from those individuals when they testify in front of us, because that's the only reason, that's the only way that we're going to get the facts that we need to address the issues that our city faces. Uh, so I'll be voting yes on this, as I did on the previous subpoena power resolutions. I think that this, again, simply reiterates a power already held by this board. Uh, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President, please add me as a co-sponsor on this resolution.
Madam Clark, please make note of that, add Alderman from the twenty-first as co-sponsor. Alderman from the, uh, twenty-second.
Mr. President, I'll give it to Alderman from the nineteenth, I don't think she has spoken.
Uh, and Alderman from the fourteenth, Alderman from the fourteenth, then Alderman from the nineteenth.
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor also, thank you.
Madam Clark, please make note that, add Alderman from the fourteenth as co-sponsor, Alderman from the nineteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, uh, first, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, and I'd like to just.
Make note of that.
And I just, uh, wanted to say that it is unfortunate that our employees are in fear of sharing information, um, being, uh, responsible in their votes on committees that they sit on. Uh, I've never seen it before, and, uh, it's, it's really sad. So we, uh, we do need this, and I thank, uh, the Alderwoman from the first and the Alderman from the twenty-third on having these, uh, tools before us in a more specific way. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Ald, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Again, what a great opportunity for a teachable moment, just so that people clearly understand, when an Alderperson asks for unanimous consent, the Alderperson is only asking to debate a bill or a resolution on the floor without going to committee. That's all the request is for. If you wanted to go to committee, ch, generally, you would object to it. But once we debate the bill, an Alderperson can still hold true to their convictions about being against a piece of subject matter. So, objecting to unanimous consent has nothing to do with whether or not it will sway your vote on the actual subject matter. So I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you. Alderwoman from the first, you recognize the close. Uh, you're muted, Alderman.
Thank you. Mr. President, Members of the Board, first, again, I'd like to indicate that, um, this resolution is not about people getting out of their cars, because you can, um, serve subpoenas and do them over Zoom and other things, so it's not anything to intimidate anybody. Mine is not political, that's ridiculous. Have to remember, before any of these people were supportive of the current administration, I was before all of you all, and still am supportive. I do not support anybody who is doing the wrong thing, okay? And everybody here pretty much knows that. And if the administration, the person who's doing this would have called me and said, hey, Sharon, uh, can I do this? I would say, don't do that, and there, here's where you need to look at, in the civil service rules. Accepted positions cannot go and threaten civil service employees. You will get yourself in trouble. And, um, I want to thank Alderman from the twenty-fourth, because in conversations we've had, whether we've been on the right side or not, if he asks me something, I think he will tell you that if it's not for me, I will still answer it, or if it's something that is in agreement with me. I will try my best to be fair with how our rules are. I am a rules person. I'm the person that goes to the corner and doesn't jaywalk, because that's how I grew up. So that's just who I am. It's my DNA, okay? I grew up in Decatur, Illinois, where jaywalking in Illinois was illegal, so I, I, I really had to be taught to jaywalk. So when I hear this political rhetoric about ridiculous things about, uh, threatening people, the only reason I'm doing this, because I could have just put streets in with all the other committees, because I did clean the original resolution up, and I didn't, because I said at the time, I can get people to come. But when I then hear people are telling me, well, we've been yelled at, we've been told to change our vote, or we've been told not to show up, I'm not going to support that. I wouldn't support it for any of you. I wouldn't support it for the president, for the comptroller, for me. That is not good behavior to me. I don't understand why people don't, um, support the fact that we have three equal bodies. We don't go over into the judges' chambers and tell them what to do. We don't go over into the mayor's office and tell them what to do, but somehow people think that the legislative body is supposed to be a rubber stamp. You all, this is my sixth mayor, every last one of them will tell you, Sharon Tyas was never a rubber stamp. Whether I started out your supporter or not, if I don't think you're doing the right thing, if you call me and talk to me, I'll tell you. If you just don't want to talk to me, then you'll hear it in the form of a resolution that I'm coming a supporter afterwards, after I said I don't need it, tells you that something went awfully wrong since the time we originally, uh, introduced the first resolution, and where I am now. Where I am now is, okay, I need to not intimidate the employees, but protect them. They should feel free to come and talk to us before a committee. And in fact, over the years, because I've been here since nineteen ninety-one, I have developed a very good uh, backdoor, uh, relationship with a lot of employees who tell me things all the time, because they know I'm not going to, uh, reveal what they said. But sometimes. Somebody muted me, I didn't mute me, okay? Okay, I'm sorry, I'll be quiet. Sometimes, uh, what I was saying is that I'm not doing this to intimidate, uh, employees, I'm doing it to protect them. A lot of employees tell me things, because they know me over the years, and I won't, uh, I won't, uh, tell who they are. In fact, I'll tell them oftentimes, give me a dollar, I'm your lawyer now. They can't make me your lawyer tell. But sometimes we do need the people to come from behind the curtain and testify. And I don't want them to be worried about if their job is going to be, uh, at risk. So anybody, the people who were saying they don't want, uh, for other members of the Board of Aldermen to throw shade at them and to intimate something that's not true, when you say, oh, people can get out the cars, or political reasons, ridiculous, okay? That wasn't what this was about, and don't even throw that into it. When you start with somebody who has been supportive of your, this administration before any of you, been knowing her since she's been a little girl, her father was my mentor, and then you get somebody who, um, didn't even put their committee into the original, uh, resolution and said, that's alright, I'm good, who still is supportive. See, supportive doesn't mean rubber stamp, it means tell you the truth when you don't want to hear it. That's my friends, all my friends are the people who tell me the truth. So that's what I've done, and now I'm here doing a resolution. Instead, you should be saying, what is going on that would make me go from A, B, C, D, to now I'm saying I need a resolution? And there's a reason for that, and to try to act like it's anything other than that, is you yourself, the people said, don't throw, uh, accusations toward me, uh, throwing accusations toward me, and I don't appreciate it, because see, I don't have to do that. I'm always bold, black, and truthful. That's who I am. A bold, black, truthful, black woman with a law degree, and I try to make sure I follow the law on both sides. And a reason why I'm asking for this resolution and asking for you to pass, uh, uh, Resolution, um, one twenty-six is because it is now my opinion that is needed. I want to also remind people, just because you say you want a res, the ability to get a resolution is separate from actually applying for a resolution. We have a procedure where we have to apply. One of the things I put in the, uh, original resolution is only restricted to that part of the committee, only Streets Committee. I can't go send a resolution, because I want to hear something about Health Committee. That would be the Alderwoman from the sixth. So I, in fact, made sure that we were within our rules to say that we could do it. Each chairperson could ask for a resolution within their constraints of their committee. I don't want a widespread. But I don't want anybody in the mayor's office telling people, you better not show up, or, uh, telling them, uh, you changed your voter. Uh, I don't like that you said this, you didn't ask me what your opinion. When I ask for somebody's honest opinion, I'm not asking for that person in the mayor's office who's doing that. I want the opinion of the employee who works for the city. And the reason we have directors, which are political appointees, and then we have commissioners who often are long-term, is because they're the people that really know how to run the city. They're the ones that know, have been enforcing the rules forever. Directors are political employees. It's whatever mayor comes in, your term only, uh, runs for the length of the mayor. The minute that the new mayor comes in, your term has expired, and the mayor can dismiss you. We, the members of the Board of Aldermen, take a lot of heat about city services. The fact of it is, the Charter says that the mayor is responsible for city services, so anything you're not getting, that's the mayor's office that's not doing it. This particular person who's running around telling people not to answer is the person in charge of city services. So if you would mind your own business and stop trying to intimidate employees, you wouldn't have had a resolution, resolution from Sharon Tyas, because although I do support the current mayor, I do not support you. You are somebody that don't even know your job, and you ought to mind your business and stay within the law, and I've called you out once before. So if you wanted me to keep calling you out, I will, okay? I will say your name, I will go to the press, I will say things. I am not scared of you, stop doing what you're doing. This resolution, again, I'm just asking for, um, uh, the Board of Aldermen, um, I'm sorry, to pass this resolution and support, not because I want to intimidate anybody, but I want our employees to feel free to, um, be able to testify, give truthful testimony without fear of retribution from somebody who works in the mayor's office.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Alderman from the tenth already, uh, recognized the Alderwoman from the first are closed, so we have to move from here. It's, it's been, it's been moved by Alderwoman from the first, second about Alderman from twenty-third and twenty-second, that we adopt Resolution one twenty-six, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
No.
No.
Motion carries.
That is the extent of first reading the resolution.
That is the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading?
We have none.
Ms. Lawrence, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, November the ninth, because we'll have a meet at nine AM via webinar. Legislation will have a meet at eleven AM via webinar. Wednesday, November tenth, parks will have a meet at nine AM via webinar. Legislation will have a meet at eleven AM via webinar. Ways and Means will have a meet at one PM via webinar. Thursday, November the eleventh, twenty twenty-one, the office will be closed in in honor of Veterans Day. Friday, November the twelfth, twenty twenty-one, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That is the extent of the announcement.
All the ones from the twenty-six.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the, members of the board. One of the former Board of Aldermen, one of your former colleagues just tiptoeing in the office, and he thought nobody saw him. But he now the new St. Louis City Commissioner of Supplies, so before I say my announcement, come on over and speak to y'all. Let me get back to what I was probably doing. I have a couple of announcements. First of all, on behalf of St. Louis City Fire Department, who everybody knows, I love Karen, Garen Mosby and Chief Jankerson, I want to make the announcement that more, for more than thirty years, the St. Louis City Fire Department has sounded the alarm about the importance of working smoke alarms. As is the tradition, the weekend of daylight saving time, St. Louis firefighters will canvass neighborhoods installing free smoke alarms. If you need a free smoke alarm, or if you just aren't sure of your, if yours are working properly, please call to schedule a visit at three one four five three 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 four zero six. That's three one four five three 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 four zero six. If you have working smoking carbon monoxide alarms, please test them, and if applicable, please change the batteries. Most smoke and carbon monoxide alarms have ten-year batteries, so replacing the batteries isn't necessary, but testing them is. So let's be sure that we test them. And then I also want to announce that I'm proud to be, of course, as you know, the Alder Lady of LJ Punch and the T. And they are having a community healing day. They're collaborating with the Black Healers Collective, and it will be this Saturday and a new twenty-six, from three to six PM at the corner of Hamilton and Delmar. So if you have an opportunity to, it's going to be addressing and giving us techniques to deal with healing from a lot of the trauma that we've gone through in our city collectively. And then the other thing I want to announce, I know y'all don't think I make this stuff up, but I'm not. November is Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and the color for Alzheimer's Awareness is purple. Everybody knows I love purple, and I told my colleague, I'm a woman's wife, I said, they probably all think I made it up, but I promise I did, so you know. Alzheimer's Awareness Month, get connected. I'm sure the board is doing some advocacy. You can get connected with the Alzheimer's Association of Greater Missouri. And just, I mean, it personally touched me because I lost my godmother earlier this year due to the debilitating circumstances and symptoms of Alzheimer's. But before that, I know it's touched all of our families, so with that, just making sure that we put our voices on our platform and help people that are battling through that as well. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty, from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to make a quick announcement that the Health and Human Services Committee will be meeting on Tuesday at four PM to hear board Bill one thirty-two. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. I want to announce that on November the sixteenth at one PM, HUSS would be having a hearing. I've been getting a lot of questions about what's going on with the ARPA funds. And so the mayor's administration will be making a presentation at one PM on November sixteenth, give us an update on how the expenditure of those funds have been going. Also, I would like to thank the chairman of the legislation committee for having the evening meetings and giving people the opportunity to engage in the process. Even though a lot of people are saying that, you know, the meetings were horrible, the masks were horrible, I couldn't see it. Guess what? As as mean spirit is of some of those comments were, they were still helpful because they gave constructive criticism about how we can do it better. I want to address something that's ignorant. There's this notion that when I chaired the committee, that I made someone get out of their car and stand in front of their headlights. That is absolutely a lie and ridiculous. We have a rule, and we were given by the city council's office, that every member of this Board of Aldermen, when you vote, you shall show your face. And that came down from the state of Missouri, and the city council office made us aware of that. So when you have, you chair a committee, I want some of the the junior aldermen to understand this. You come here, you want us to change rules, we 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 change those rules, and we're governed by rules, and that's a good thing, and that helps our healthy debate. Okay, so when I ask somebody as a chairman to show their face, that is within our, me as a chairman. It's not technically written in the rules, but as a chairman, you can govern your committee the way you see fit. And it's only fair that we see people. Now, to that point, I never told someone to get out of their car. Again, that person could have chose to use their dome lights. Why that person didn't decide to do that is his issue, is not my issue as the chair of the meeting at that particular time. The the process has been transparent. Have all the Aldermen got in a room, and and can everybody see what we're doing? That's not even reasonable. That's not a reasonable expectation. That's just now not how this works. We got the information at such a late date. If we had all this information in April, we could be doing a whole lot of other things extra, you know, to to bring in participation, but that's just not where we are because we got the information late. So I want people to stop the lying on me. I'm okay with people not liking me, because that's your problem. It ain't mine, okay? But just don't lie on me.
All right, thank you.
If you're so concerned about transparency, then speak up when you know what's wrong. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, I would like to wish all of our veterans happy Veterans Day and remind people that on Saturday, tomorrow, their Veterans Day celebration will take place at Soldiers Memorial. I believe the parade is stepping off at ten thirty. I think all of us were invited. I plan to attend. I'd like to give a special shout out to the Aldermen from the twenty-second and the twenty-fifth, because I know they're veterans. I'm not sure if there's anyone else on our team here that are are veterans, but I know they are. So if you are, you can raise your hand and let me know, or, you know, happy Veterans Day to you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to say what was exactly just said. So remember to celebrate Veterans Day, not only this coming Saturday, but next week as well. And then I also wanted to, on behalf of myself and the Alderwoman from the twentieth, invite everyone down to Cherokee Street tomorrow for our ninth annual Cherokee Jazz Crawl. It starts at ten in the morning and goes all day long. There'll be over thirty businesses with live music. So it's the annual Cherokee Jazz Crawl, so come down and check us out tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I don't know why they keep forgetting. I have streets at ten o'clock on Wednesdays, and and somehow it just gets lost, so I'm gonna, every week I'm gonna come back. Streets at ten o'clock on Wednesdays, okay? And I will call the board, I will email the boards clerk and let them know which bills are before us. I also want to follow up on what the Alderman from the twenty-second ward said a little bit in about appearance. We have a rule that says for you to talk or to vote, you have to be on the floor of the Board of Aldermen. Obviously, we're not at the floor of Board of Aldermen. So I was the first person, even before anything came down, that's extrapolated from that. Since we're on Zoom, if you can't be on the floor, we at least need to see your face. So that's the nearest thing we have to a floor, is that we are on Zoom. So that's where, and then it came down from the state also and from city councils. But originally, if you guys will remember, I was always saying, I need to see your handsome face. I need to see your pretty face. Because otherwise, we don't know who's talking. We do not have a floor right now, but the Zoom is our floor. So if you do, if you want to say anything in my committee, you have to unstop your, unstop your video. You have to show, and if you also are muted, we can't hear you. So those two things go hand in hand with our very own rule of being on the floor.
All right, thank you. And Alderman from the first, thanks for clearing that up, because the state did come down and say that when when cities across the state were starting to go to these online meetings. And it has a practical reason also, because you could impersonate someone else. I could, somebody can go on a Zoom call in a community meeting and say that they were Lewis Reed, Sharon Tyus, Jeffrey Boy, Bill Stevens, who else, and John, anybody, right? So you need that identifier. So as a practical reason, I understand why the state did that. Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Wednesday, November tenth, myself, along with my colleague from the third, Alderman Bosley, with a host of community organizations, are hosting a utility assistance fair where residents are able to come and get help that they need to expire MSD or AMRA. So I do want to thank those three utility partners for for making this possible. Again, that is this coming Wednesday, November tenth, at the Wesley House Association, forty-five oh seven East, Eastly Avenue. And they can live anywhere essentially, but of course, we want this to be geared towards St. Louis City residents. So if any of your residents need help, please send them by. We're doing this from ten o'clock AM to two o'clock PM. Again, that's at the Wesley House Association, a longtime community anchor in North City. And, Mr. President, I also want to send a happy birthday to our, well, not our, but our colleague across the way over in St. Louis County, County Prosecutor Wesley Bale. He is twenty-one years old again today, so happy birthday to him. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, happy birthday to Wesley. Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I I also appreciate the clarification on our rules as far as appearing on video. I think it would be helpful going forward if we're doing public meetings to have that as a part of the instructions that we post on the website, that testimony will only be taken with a video accompanied, because I think we did have some call-in participants who were authorized by the clerk and by STLTV to to be on our witness list. So I think that's where some of the confusion came in. And so I think maybe if we could just adjust our public expectations so that that the public knows how they can participate, and if there are other ways that we need to make ourselves more accessible to folks who have who don't have access to a smartphone or a computer, or have other accessibility needs, I think we should think about that as well, or just come back in person. I would I would very much appreciate coming back in person at this point. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I wanted to let everyone know that the Friends of Crandlet Park are hosting a Crandlet Park cleanup tomorrow morning from nine AM to noon. Tools are provided by Brightside, so thank you very much to Brightside. And I'm buying donuts and coffee for the early birds. I hope to see y'all there. Bye.
Right, thank you. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, so, and I understand, because during that time of COVID and trying to get people registered, I have been one of the people who argued about that people didn't have computers. But I do want to say that you can also submit your written testimony at this point to the committee, and that will be part of the testimony. So if you don't have a of access to a phone, video, which I encourage, I would say many, many people do and just haven't learned how to use them, not having access and not have, learning how to use them are two different things. Just do a written testimony and submit that to the clerk, and that will become part of our file.
Yeah, Alderman from the first, thanks for pointing that out. You took that one away from me. I was gonna, I was gonna point that out at the end. Thank you. Thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from tenth, you're working out, recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you. Definitely loved your lawyer day today, isn't it?
Yeah, you 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 got it started. We skipped that one.
I believe we're on the motion to excuse. Is that correct, sir?
That's it.
We will make a motion to excuse the other persons from the third, seventeenth, and the twenty-seventh for necessary absence.
Move about Alderman from the tenth, second about Alderman from twenty-second. Alderman from the first, please.
I thought I heard the Alderman Bosley vote at least on one thing. He didn't vote at all? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I voted like three times. I'm just driving.
He's doing what I tell him not to, but he was here, okay?
I was given bad information from someone, so I apologize for that.
The thing is, love your lawyer day.
Replace the Alderman from the third with Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so.
No!
Don't make that mistake again. We we made that mistake before. Alderman from the tenth, please.
So I will amend, I will amend my motion. And the twenty-seventh for necessary absence.
All right, all right, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, we got you. Then move by Alderman from the tenth, second about Alderman from twenty-second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, motion carries. We didn't catch it. Alderman from the first and twenty-fifth, you're gonna have to speak up the next time. Alderman from tenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As much as I hate to, we will make a motion to adjourn this lovely meeting till November twelfth at ten oh one AM.
Move by Alderman from the second about Alderman from twenty-second, and somebody else had it catching. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Never, never get a no. We stand, motion carries. We stand adjourned. You all have a good, good weekend.